Like the call being in order, can they get a roll call please?
Mrs. Craig is not here, Mrs. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Hayden?
Here.
Mr. Ness?
Here.
Mrs. Steele?
Here.
Mrs. Stahl is not here, oh, Mrs. Ramsey is not here, sorry. Mrs. Rudy?
Here.
Mr. Davis, do you have a word?
Will you please do it on the flag, see what it looks like? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the judiciary public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Sussex One Inch Regional School District Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the school building and notice of said meeting sent to the New Jersey Herald and the Star-Ledige. Sussex One Inch Regional School District's mission statement. Sussex One Inch Regional School District is a responsive, caring, child-centered community. Our mission is to educate each individual to become a confident, competent, lifelong learner, and productive, responsible citizen by providing challenging opportunities in a safe environment for a partnership of families, schools, and communities. For this time, we'll move on to the report, Mr. Cronk.
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to touch on a couple of things. Kind of brainstorm or begin to brainstorm district goals. One of the areas that I want to continue to work on, we said last year was a multi-year goal to enhance student learning outcomes in math, in particular, Sussex Middle School. I'd like to continually enhance safety and security. So I don't know, maybe after discussions with the department heads, you know, working way in on some various cool ideas. Want to make you aware, we touched base a little bit about it last week, but it's becoming more, or last time, but it's becoming a little more prominent now, is the Drive One For Your School Initiative at One Inch School. Something that one of our teachers, Mr. Cool, we're coordinating, Mr. Gregory, myself to a degree. You may be aware, Nielsen Auto Group recently took over the former Matrino Ford facility and they're all set late October to host us at One Inch School. They basically bring out, I don't know, I want to say a dozen very nice vehicles. And every licensed driver that takes a test drive, no commitment to buy, they really don't even try to sell you anything that's not, that's not their intent. I mean, they want to market their, their company, but every licensed driver that takes a test drive raises twenty dollars for the school. And, you know, the past two times that I was a part of the event, you raised approximately five thousand dollars each time. So basically, you jump in a vehicle, take a spin up to One Inch Township. We just got the confirmation that they're, they're happy to let us use their parking lot to turn around in, come back. He's trying to make it a little bit bigger and better than it was in the past, exploring ideas like getting the sheriff's office out to do car seat checks or bicycle helmet checks, having a presence from then, maybe trying to coordinate with SchoolCraft or your company to do family photos. Elks has a food truck, maybe some face painting pumped. Trying to draw people out to the event so you can raise a maximum, maybe three hundred, drive, get six thousand dollars is their max payout. So in the past, it was a great, it was a great event, you know, we hope it's a great event again. Also had the opportunity to attend all the back-to-school nights. Extraordinarily well-attended at all three schools, One Inch School last night, really couldn't even park. You know, I had to park legally, basically.
What the hell? Do you want our special parking spot?
No, no, no. The parents, the parents take precedent, you know what I mean? I'm the one who should walk.
Which one of remind me that this is being videotaped?
Yeah.
Parking track or something.
Yeah. And now we have some discussions from our department heads. My experience is at the Lawrence School, it taught me go A, B, C order. That's Mr. Cronk. I think the board's been looking for it to be a little more casual and, you know, conversational with you, so you, you know.
All right. To tell a joke or something? I heard you gotta yell that.
Oh, I'm sorry if you thought I yelled it yet.
No, that's okay.
Says we gotta be out of here at seven thirty, so make sure the joke is short.
In June, I guess we talked about a bunch of things that we were gonna do this summer. Chromebook refresh, these are all things that we were able to accomplish this summer. My guys touch every Chromebook, clean them up, roll them out. We added new Chromebooks for the third and sixth graders. Reconnect and test all the classrooms. We installed new IP-based securities, or PA system, which we married together with our security system. Maybe, you know, Mr. Ball can talk about that in exact, I'm sure there's some of the details we probably wouldn't want to talk about in public, right?
Yeah, you try to balance what, what we're giving out compared to what we're retaining relative to security. So maybe you can elaborate on, you know, what that means, the IP versus, you know, what was in place.
Well, they were just regular speakers, but IP, you know, they're smart devices that we can monitor.
Like Alexa?
Right.
I was just asking.
But we worked on that, you know, from the day school got out until I think the day school started. And we're finishing up, I think they're coming next week to finish the Lawrence. At Lawrence, we're only doing an overlay. We didn't redo every speaker though, because they were still in, they were in good shape. I think some of these speakers here were pretty old, so. And again, we tied it in with the lockdown scenario that Mr. Ball could probably talk about and executive, right? Mr. Ball, if you need me to show up there, I will.
That's right.
If you have any questions, text me. We installed new server cabinets throughout the district, battery backups. This, this summer was a little challenging because we lost some staff, we lost some administrative staff. My guys did a really good job, I thought, picking up the slack. In September alone, they've already closed two hundred and eleven tickets. It's two hundred and eleven times that somebody's complaining. We can get a ticket on the phone. Maybe they'll try calling.
She said she didn't have a problem. You hear me.
But that's about it. If anybody has any questions.
All right. Just going to real quick hit on some of the major projects, I'll say, that we completed this summer, you know, this school year. I'm sure many of you have seen the front of the middle school, we worked on aesthetics as well as Mr. Ball kind of drew up a nice Photoshop rendition of the front there that we had in it. We were able to go buy something, we had some concrete to look at. So we stayed the whole bottom portion of middle school along with some planting, freshened up the railings, just kind of brightened it up a little bit, and we're also be furthering upon that in the near future, I'd say. Looking at some windows and stuff, you know, some budgeted items, or not budgeted, some bidet items that we'll look at in the future. You know, replacing some windows, stuff like that. We have some kitchen equipment that's still in works, actually. We had a couple pieces delivered last week, and this is a initiative every year. We, we look at a couple pieces of kitchen equipment, just kind of keep upgrading what they have. So we're still, like I said, we received some equipment, still waiting for some, some other stuff to come in. Many of you seen when you walked in, the entrance by the solar panel. We kind of renovated the pile there, brightened that area up a little bit, it needed some work, obviously. The major one this year was the parking lot at CEEL. I don't know if any of you have got to see it yet. Along with the parking lot, we also did some sidewalks that were cracked and need repair. It also helped with the pitch, the grading going down towards the school with water dispersal. That was probably, like I said, that was the biggest project we took on this year and it came out really nice. If any of you guys have tried by it, it's a lot better than it was. And I thank you guys because it's gonna make a difference when it comes time to plow this winter. It's gonna make a world of difference. This is an ongoing project, but I want to say we got about forty-five percent of it done thus far since we, since we received the material about in summer. We're doing the LEDs like we did here at the middle school at Lawrence School. In the hallways where we have completed some of it, it is night and day difference. I don't know if any of you have got to see a picture that Mr. Ball may have included in the daily rundown, but it, I mean, it's, it's bright now, it's not, because it was with like wall hung fixtures and just kind of cast the light in a weird direction, but it's, it's really good looking, to that side. As Steve mentioned, new PA systems in, in One Inch School and middle school. We're doing an overlay at Lawrence. This is night and day difference as well. As to what we had in place, it was an old, what an analog system is what they call it, the technical, technical term for it. As Steve said, it's all IP-based now, so if you have a problem with an individual speaker, you can see that on a computer, it will tell you, right?
Yeah.
You can adjust volume through the computer, so the functionality of it is a lot better than what we had. Not to mention it works. Also various summer repairs, obviously in-house maintenance, outside vendors coming in during the summer replacing motors for HVAC units, you, you name it. So, I mean, we probably closed out one hundred plus things this summer. Our new plumber, by the way, in relation to this, has been doing great so far. Just two more that we, that I'm gonna hit on was the SMS stage rehab. That came out very nice, I think. Can't got to see it last time. And we have our new truck coming in next month, Octo, first week of October, they said we'd deliver it. So that will be a nice addition to our snow removal process, yeah. Upcoming projects, I only have two of them really in the mix. We're gonna be doing a roof repair at CEEL, which I have budgeted, and LEDs for the board office. Once I start wrapping up Lawrence, I'll start working on outfitting the, the board office with the LEDs. Obviously, that will cut energy consumption as well as a couple other things, you know, maintenance. We've got a maintenance possible, so you know, we're basically able every couple of months, now it's every couple of years, so.
Mr. Deco's doing some outside work too on the light fixture, trying to cast the light.
It's all, everything, from outside fixtures to inside fixtures. There's actually an initiative with, I think it's Clean Energy New Jersey. We get a rebate back, and I, I think I'm not, I don't know if we've gotten one back.
I don't know, my update.
Okay, there you go.
Someone tried to steal my pen.
I didn't. And that's all I have, if you guys have any questions, feel free.
Okay. Oh, do you want me to go if we're going alphabetically or?
Well, I don't. I felt that pushed me to the end.
On the last one.
On the, on the.
Exactly.
So first, I just want to say to Mr. Kronski and his team, they've been incredible with the, the transition for me coming into the curriculum director role. They did a nice job of collecting a lot of accounts and passwords. And, and I honestly, I don't know what I would have done without them doing that. It's been a huge help, so, you know, hats off to them on that. That's been, I can't even say how helpful that's been. So, the PEA grant, I mean, ultimately, we did not receive that funding. I have three calls out at this point to the state, trying to get information back as to why we didn't receive it. And also, I want to know, moving forward, if it's something that they're gonna be opening again. I believe it will be, but I just would like to get that confirmation so that we can plan more in advance this time and be prepared for next year, to be able to kind of hit the ground running with that a little bit earlier. We're currently doing MAPS testing across the district. You know, some growing pains with that. Ultimately, I'm learning as we go, the upload procedure as well as the reports that are coming back. You know, there's some things that I'm already gonna do different next year and already looking into. I had an opportunity to go to each of the back-to-school nights, which was nice, to be able to introduce myself, then also present for VSI. And in doing the VSI presentations, it was nice to be able to speak to those teachers and work with them and continue to work with them on improving the VSI program. There's already some things that we're talking about for next year to get that program moving a little bit quicker and a little bit more efficiently at the beginning of the school year. Let me show you some other things. The NJSLA scores are in, and we're working on distributing them to send home. They'll be coming home from the main office of each building at SMS and WES. I've been working with Janine over at Frankfurt. She is their curriculum director there. I had the privilege of working with her earlier when I was a teacher at Frankfurt, so it's nice because I know her a little bit. But we're working on two things. One, they're putting on a district wide, or excuse me, a regional PD in October that they've invited us to come and attend. So I'm just looking at what they're offering to see what our teachers would benefit from. And then also, they do the one book initiative where basically each school in the region reads from a theme, not necessarily one book, because you're spread from kindergarten all the way through a senior in high school. So they select a theme, and ultimately, that'll be presented to the library system and hopefully, you know, we can get everybody on track with that. And then some other things, you know, I'm working to, to get to know the teachers in the other buildings as best I can. It's, one thing I wasn't anticipating, which is fun, fun to try to learn, is when you receive an email and you don't really even know who the heck the email's coming from. So that's been good, trying to get to know everybody that way and taking, you know, on the feed there. And I've made a point to make it to each building at this point, to show my face in each of the buildings. And again, just be present for the teachers and try to be responsive for them and help in any way I can. And then on their end, a thank you there as well, the teachers have been very supportive. You know, in the learning process that, that is taking place a little bit over the first couple of weeks as well. That's it.
Hi, sir. All right, I'm gonna tag off with the, the, one of the things that Mr. Luntz and I have discussed in looking at it and trying to analyze where, you know, the vehicle's short. One of the things that we did not be surprised in is the fact that we had such a large preschool disabled population. Going into the grant department, we had eighteen class of all students, which really limited our ability, the proposal for the number of classes that we could open. So we think that might have been part of the problem. On that note, I do want to just prepare you for the future. We currently, we went into the summer anticipating eighteen preschool disabled students. Currently now, based on the number of move-ins, based on the number of referrals that I have gotten from EI early interventions since July first, at the rate we're going, I am projecting that we will have a preschool disabled population at least thirty-three students by January. So what if we had a double, within the next four months? So I just wanted to prepare you for that. And then if they open up the grant, that definitely will have an impact on what we propose. So, anyway, but I have to say, preschool keynote, we've got a lot of ideas. We're working to come up with creative ways to accommodate our students. And not just accommodate them, but to really do provide quality, meaningful resources that we want to have. And I do think we are prepared to meet this challenge. On a happier note, we got a lot of exciting professional development opportunities coming up. On the October fourteenth Professional Development Day, Mark Bonson from our attorney's office will be presenting to the entire district staff everything that I need to know about special education and people's education. The Tanya Mongoy, who is the county child study team supervisor, will be participating with the child study teams. She's coming to October twenty-fifth meeting. She actually came last year, and she's really, really appreciated being able to ask her questions about what to include or how to include certain things in IP. So I'm really excited that she offers to do that again this year. One thing that I'm really super excited about is, you know, working really closely with our special education parent group. One of the concerns that we, and it's not unique to this district, it's every district, is how do we grow our membership? How do we get more people involved? So what we decided to do for our first meeting this year is we're having a special education parent resource fair. And I also reached out to High Point Regional High School. So their CPAG and our CPAG will be co-sponsoring this event on October tenth, and I actually passed the flyers. So anyway, so we will be hosting this event with the high school on October tenth. It will be in their media center. It'll be from six-thirty to nine o'clock in their media center. Over thirty-six agencies have been invited to participate, and so far, we have more than ten agencies confirmed. And I keep getting emails from people that are saying they're interested, or quite, you know, yeah, I have some questions about, you know, what we're trying to accomplish, so I'm really, really excited about that. I think it'll be good, and then hopefully, if we get the parents to come, that some of them will stop by the CPAG table and join our parent support, which would be, which would be awesome. I know it's kind of early, it's only September, but as we write IEPs, we are already including some extended school year dates for July of twenty-twenty. So the proposed dates are July sixth through July thirtieth, again, Mondays through Thursdays, eight-thirties through twelve o'clock. Oh, I did, I met with all of our counseling staffs. So there would be the school counselors, the school psychologists, and social workers. And I also, some of our related service providers also volunteered to be part of our risk assessment team. And I did a risk assessment training with all of them on September eleventh. We wanted to do it on the tenth, which is National Suicide Awareness Day, but unfortunately, it's never been lucked out. But we went through the district policy and procedures, we discussed the protocols, and everybody who came really thought it was, it was a good opportunity to speak with each other so that we could all get on the same page within the district. And unfortunately, we have only done three assessments since this year has started. So I was glad that I was able to get everybody very early in the year to get things up and running. And I do believe I will do them curiously through the briefing about the year, just to see if there's anything that we can, any way we can improve what we're already doing. One of the things that I'm excited about most recently, because we did go into this school year with a contract with St. Clair's, which we previously did not have, so I'm hoping that it will facilitate the process for our students. And not that it's a pleasant experience, but if we can make it all pleasant, it's pleasant. I'm hoping that we will be able to build a very new partnership with St. Clair. And the last thing I'd like to share, actually happened today, that I'm excited about. I meet with the directors at Sainsbury High Point, we meet once a month, just to talk about, we actually meet at High Point, so we collaborate, talk about, you know, things that we can do together, how we can improve the transition from the elementary level to the high school level. And one of the things that we kept talking about was doing multi-district disciplinary, like PLC type thing, where it's like, how would you solve it together, and social workers get together, and everything else. Because they're very small groups, you know, like in the school buildings, you have, you know, a couple dozen teachers. In the channels of districts, you've got, you know, a lot of teachers. But when it comes to the child study team, they're little groups of one, two, three. So we actually just picked a date this morning, decided that we're gonna try and have our first multi-district disciplinary team meetings on November twenty-second, so I'm very excited about that. I hope it might be a really good opportunity for the, you know, for the psychologists, the social workers, for the people from different disciplines to actually share and find out what's going on in all the districts and how all the districts are handling, you know, similar situations. And that's all I have.
Just expand a little bit, clarify what I think you were talking about relative to Kate Grant. One of the reasons it becomes challenging with potential for our population is because that classified group, the state recommends to three students, classified students per classroom, maximum of five, right? So with those numbers, to get that appropriate ratio, you're looking at the potential to come up with like seven classrooms for that.
All right, well, thank you guys very much.
Wait, Christine.
Yeah.
I have, I have a question.
I would, I would just flip.
I would have been running you down.
So the, two good things of good news, one which Frank talks about, but the district, I just found out today, every year, we get a safety incentive award from our insurance fund. And, and the amounts vary, but this year, we got four thousand dollars to be credited against our insurance. And the way that we achieve that is because we're very proactive by having quarterly safety meetings with our safety committee in the district, and we also participate in quarterly meetings with the insurance fund. And so the, we just had a safety meeting this week, there's principals there, there's child study team, transportation, buildings of grounds, school nurses. And we just review the claims to see if there's things that we can improve upon, if there were a workers comp incident or open items to talk about. We had several things that we wanted to discuss and get a feel from our risk of, George Moreville, who's our risk manager, to see what he thinks, what is best practice in other districts and what we can do here. So Frank and his secretary Jen really take care of a lot of the processing for that reward, but when we're looking to cut money every year, four thousand dollars, it doesn't seem like a lot of money, but it's four thousand dollars we can use for something else. And then we also received a check for the middle school LED project, which is kind of what Frank alluded to. We've got eight thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars on a project that cost us thirty, a little less than thirty-six thousand. So it's about twenty-five percent of the cost that we laid out, we've received back as a rebate in addition to the energy savings that we'll achieve over time. So I would expect that as CEEL and the other schools get finished, we'll receive similar funding back. Maybe the rebate amount might change as the program continues, but, and that's from the New Jersey Clean Energy Program. And that's all I have.
Just to further on that, basically how they, how they assess the rebate is by how many fixtures you swap out actually or purchase. So there's a set amount for certain LED versus another type of LED, let's say. So that's basically how they base your rebate on that.
Mr. Gregory?
Yeah. So for the district, if I believe, you know, all staff have provided training on that. We're looking at school self-assessment grading. We did our reports back in June. We will be presenting that at the next board meeting. You know, copies will be placed in your package from each of the schools. We scored very well, seventy-six out of seventy-eight, which I'll briefly explain a little bit at the next board meeting. Of course, safety, we did some substitute security guard interviews. We started a couple of weeks ago, I believe I made that note in your, the weekly, you know, rundown minutes. We're looking at doing a couple more interviews tomorrow. Give it an example, we actually had a bear incident today at the, the One Inch School where we had, you know, a bear come into the back of the building. You know, we have a security guard there.
Into the building?
Not into the building, no. It's in the back lot. Fortunately, I have a pretty good relationship with my staff as I was.
It was after school?
It was after school, it was after school during the, yeah. After school, because we're out, except for the, you know, we had the aftercare. Hero boys were out in front, so nobody was in the area. And I was actually talking to Mr. Ball at the parking lot when, you know, I had a staff member notify me that, that Mr. Gray, there's a bear coming through. And it was, you know, about forty yards away here from this white bear walking, you know, just on the other side of the, the parking lot, kind of just strolling. So we immediately notified, you know, security and the staff to, you know, assure officers came inside. Officers quickly came inside. Officer Story was outstanding, because there's a bear, he quickly came out with me, the bear saw both of us, and decided he was going to kind of run down in between the back and third grade wing and the fence.
The bear was afraid of you guys?
The bear was afraid of us. So now he's running down, but we know that we had kids out in the playground. So now, we know the only exit, so that bear had come out into the playground. So our first, Story and I ran down through the third grade wing, and as we're running down, we see the bear running alongside of us outside the building in the same direction. So we managed to get to the third grade door. Again, the way Officer Story handled it was textbook. He positioned himself immediately outside the door, kind of keeping the door open. I went out to help secure all the students back inside the building, and that bear came around the corner, and there was a showdown between Officer Story and the bear at about probably ten feet. And they just kind of stared at each other, and he held his ground. The bear held his ground too, and, you know, the bear, you know, backed up, and eventually went back and jumped over the fence. So again, it was a, you know, classic case of the, having security there was certainly, you know, extremely helpful and how he reacted was, yeah, textbook. So it was all a win-win for everybody. And I don't think the students even saw the bear. They had no idea what was going on, they just, you know, totally go inside, and you're all like, why are we going inside?
Well, thank you guys very much. Does anybody have any questions, comments? And well, again, thank you guys for being here. We're very excited with our administrative team and appreciate you guys sharing. Anybody have any comments while we're? Anybody have any comments while we're in public session?
I want to thank the staff and the administrators for a great job in opening this year amid the challenges of maybe diminished, not diminished, but a smaller administrative team and the type of belts. And I really, I don't understand why we're here. People are busy. This group of folks here have had extra meetings, extra days, we've had several back-to-school nights. We had presentations that, important, are things that nobody had questions about. There's only five board members here. There were six, eight, eleven, eighteen, twenty minutes of presentations. These folks are overtaxed. They're doing more jobs than the people who, who were credit assesses them. There was zero questions by board members. To steal a little bit of what Mrs. Riker said, and she's right, this money that we're spending here for the attorney to come up, for this gentleman to come out and videotape for whatever reason, I really don't understand, we need to like be proactive, save taxpayer money and keep the money in the classroom. This is a, an abhorrent waste of taxpayer money. And, and we're volunteers, and I hate to leave us out of it, but we all had things that we could've done tonight, and we would get this information somewhere else, this is just a ridiculous waste of time. This meeting is September, the next one is in December. People are gonna be in the midst of their holiday. This is, this is a waste of time. The last time that we had a meeting like this, there was a very similar amount of time spent discussing things. Nobody had any discussion. When we meet in, in committees, many of these committee meetings, as everyone knows here, last for hours and we get real work done and we get real information that can't be discussed here. This is just a blatant waste of taxpayer dollars and these fine people's time. Total waste, just to have that, ridiculous.
I think the board, I think the board decided to do these work sessions so that the public can see the work that they're doing.
There is absolutely no one here, at least us.
Yeah, I don't think it's been, I don't think it's justified myself after having the time. I mean, if people want to come, they can come. Surely, you know, I have a question. Can we, do you ever get a report as to how many people look at the video? Or can you?
I think, I think we can.
I'd be curious, even to see what kind of interest there is in beyond our monthly meetings. You know, I think it's a good idea in theory, what this process was to try this, but I kind of agree that it's, it's kind of productive and it's a waste of time. If there's watching this and wants to come out and complain, come out and complain, you know? I think we should go back to the, to the way it has been.
I think just as a, as a suggestion, I think, you know, to try it is one thing, and I think it's worth the fact that you came here to see whether or not there was a benefit to having a different work meeting. Some districts have a work meeting before their regular monthly meeting, so that you can also discuss the agenda. If their presentations should be made, it's still at the same meeting date. So that's something to consider. So if you are still pro the idea of having a work session, so you have additional time to kind of go through the agenda, ask questions, you can do so still at that same scheduled date.
But I guess, we're still having our own committee meetings and then two monthly meetings?
It would be the same, right, like immediately before, let's say your regular meeting on that day. So let's say you have any questions regarding agenda items, you discuss that during your work session, by the time you get to your regular meeting, you're really ready to go through the agenda more. So it's the same day, but instead of, but it's just a session immediately preceding the regular. So let's say, members of the public really want to hear more of that back and forth dialogue about substance agenda items, they can attend that. Or if they're just really here to see more just the presentations, they could skip the work session and go straight to the regular meeting, where at that point, the board will just be ready to kind of roll through the agenda, and it's more about the public comment and the presentations of them. So it's just, you have some leeway to kind of not play around with it, but still incorporate a work session, if that's something that the board thinks would be valuable.
Is there a building through grounds in the meeting this morning?
Both committee meetings are still on the, on the calendar, correct?
Yes, yeah, I kind of thought that when that happened, that.
And there are several things we can't discuss here in open session that fits this kind of a little board. And it doesn't seem that there is the public that's clamoring to come here.
I would've expected more people with school back in session.
And that's why I have to really hand it to everybody, because they did a great job. And they did a great job, because obviously, there's no.
They don't come for board meetings either, though.
That's why it's not appropriate, don't it? We're spending money here.
Yep.
Foolish.
I originally thought that this would be a place of the individual meetings, that more.
Well, even so, even if it is.
That's not.
Yeah, but even so.
But it's not.
I, I know, but I thought.
Because we had our curriculum meeting, which I couldn't attend, but we had that, and we have a policy meeting next week, right? So.
But I mean, originally, that's like always been happening, like this would be a place for that.
Right, and those discussions are much more in-depth, correct?
Correct.
From your experience, this is very.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do it. Correct.
Yeah, it's spinning on wheels here. There's much more important things we need to do. End of the time, everybody. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Is it still, do you agree that maybe we should stop the?
Yeah, maybe for down the.
I think it was, I think it was worth, worth trying, but I understand what they're saying, and it's, nobody's gonna show up, you know, it was an attempt to be as transparent as possible.
I don't think there was any more to our transparency.
I'm sorry.
I don't think there was any question to the transparency of this board in the past, as long as I've been here.
Right, but it's about.
So I don't, I don't think that, that there was any question as to us being transparent, but now we're, we're frivolously spending money that could either go in the classrooms or go in the taxpayers' pockets, and these folks giving up their time and volunteers already. This is a really stressful time of year for all the administrators and all the teachers in the district. And December is also the same. I, I really don't see a place for it. And I don't think anybody was questioning the integrity of the board or if there was a lack of transparency. This is just another opportunity to have that camera going. That's my feeling.
I don't think it's only about transparency, I think it's about accessibility. There are people that can't come to the, physically come to the meetings that have an opportunity to see them because the cameras there.
I'm gonna turn to this one, you know?
And I think there's this one with work sessions or let's say committee, a whole meetings, part of it is just for the board, who's not a member of every single committee, every member, to have an opportunity to get maybe more of a synopsis than just their meetings, a minutes being read at the meeting. So again, it's not for every board. I just commend the board for at least trying it, right, and coming together to see whether or not there is a value to it. And I think the consensus, maybe it's not needed at this time, but I think, I think people, you know, the board should try different types of meetings and try to run their meetings differently, so at least you know what you prefer, what you don't prefer, right? Whether there is a public need. What if this was a packed room? Then you would've known there was a public demand for it. Had you not held this meeting today, you would have known that. So I think you're.
But council, we don't even have that many people already in the meeting.
What I'm saying is, it gauges, it just gauges, it's another option assessment for the board to see how it can conduct its meetings and what is in the public interest or in the school's interest. Today, you've realized or you've had some information now as to whether or not you want to proceed with the work session. So I don't think it was a complete waste of time, I just think now you know maybe more, more or less what you prefer.
I think they issued that, I think it's a hybrid, and I, I think because it's a hybrid, people are not familiar with, you know, okay, there's a work session this month, they've been accustomed to, the one meeting once forever, and between meetings, we can say what we're doing, we can put out the announcement, but people usually know the one Monday, or the one Monday a month is the board meeting, that's pretty much what they know. I think the hybrid kind of was unsuccessful, maybe because people don't, not enough people know about it. And I don't, I think it would take months to years before people get back into it, unless we switched to that.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't understand it to be anything like that at all. I understood to be just that a work session, whereas instead of in the committees where there's, you know, three of us, that we have all of us together once in a while to work on different issues. It really, to me, had nothing to do with whether the public was here or not. You know, I mean, we, we, we're talking individually, I guess, but I mean, it was an opportunity for nine of us to be together and have all our heads working on something.
But, and I have to say this, we do not get the information from our administrators that we get in a, in a closed, smaller session. That's how I feel. Because there are more.
I think that the information that we get on the Friday prior to the meeting, or the agenda, gives us the opportunity to reach out to any of the.
Correct.
Individuals who should pretend to get clarification on whatever it is. And we had no discussion here on any of the items that were presented to us. I believe that next week when we meet, that folks, if they have questions, they'll have the hard information before the meeting to prepare themselves, but this is not what this meeting is. And like I said before, there are certain aspects of what goes on in a board meeting that cannot be discussed at a work session. Right?
I think there is a lot that you can discuss, honestly, in a work session.
Personnel cannot be discussed.
You're not supposed to speak specifically about personnel, but you can ask inquiries about how program is functioning overall, certain policy considerations, if there's any community members reaching out to you that you want to relay. I mean, there's a lot of information you can discuss. Of course, you cannot discuss confidential student information or personal information or security information, but you can throw ideas around, you can, you make suggestions to administration, you can administer the schools, but you can certainly bring ideas and share ideas. And so I, I don't see the, again, it's for every board to decide what fits it, right? So, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I don't disapprove of them just like overall, but I think it's for every board to decide what is useful and beneficial. And of course, being careful with what is discussed, but it's to each board, to each board's discretion.
I agree. Do you need, either need to do it once a month or go back to the old way? And I still think the hybrid is a good, although it's a good idea. Well, it seems like the majority of us would like to go back to the old way probably, and you know, I, I agree with Mr. Hayden as far as this was every month. And there was no committees, it would be, be hard to get, you know, information like we do now, but I think it was great to try and, you know, we can, are we able to stop it? What's your Mrs. Riker? Are we able to, you have to.
I, I would have to re-advertise the meeting, or cancel the upcoming ones that we have if that's what the board.
Seems like it's a majority, right?
If we have that policy, then.
I'm sorry.
Is it written that way in the policy?
It's on the meetings.
Yeah.
I mean, if it is, is that the change?
There's not, there's nothing in policy that says.
I thought it was open-ended, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I don't think we added anything in policy about.
So the only thing that we did was, once the board made a decision to include the work sessions, I advertised the year having the work sessions in June, December, September, March. So I would have to take out the upcoming ones that had been advertised.
All right, cool. I think we should, we should do that, since it's the majority of the.
We can't discuss, at this meeting, we can't take.
At the next meeting, you would.
Next week, so there's regular meetings.
Yeah. Meaning schedule that's already.
That's why it's good to be working for.
All right, at the, at this point, we will move on to audience remarks. Members of the audience are invited to make brief comments about items on this agenda and matters of interest to the district. Three, anything? Seeing none, I believe we're going to have a short executive session. I was informed. Two minutes. Two minutes. Do we even have to leave, or can you shut that off and we can?
There's no.
The votes are the whole.
I just want to talk to Mr. Lindsay.
A resolution to this, Mr. Riker?
Yeah, if he wants to wait, sure.
Whereas pursuant to NJSA 10-4-12, the Assistant Regional Board of Education may exclude the public from that portion of a public meeting, at which the board discusses any of the matters described in NJSA 10-4-12, E1 through 9. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Assistant Regional Board of Education, during the closed session, discuss personnel and legal matters. Now therefore, be it further resolved by the Assistant Regional Board of each petition. And pursuant to NJSA 10-13D, the timeline and the circumstances under which a discussion conducted in closed session, may be disclosed to the public as to when the need for confidentiality and other purposes.
All right, it'll be approximately two minutes and no action will be taken. Looking for a motion? Most of you, most of us, and in all favor.